I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Dinkert.
Steve.
Present.
Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Present.
Councilmember King.
Present.
Austin.
Present.
Helly.
Present.
Hagan.
Present.
Fisher.
Present.
Enright.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item one is a motion for adoption of the agenda. We need a motion.
So moved.
And with the, yeah, with the addition.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Item number two is a motion for approval of minutes from August 21st and 23rd, 2017.
Um, I believe that I was present at the August 23rd meeting, but I'm not listed in the minutes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what?
She was at the August 23rd.
The August 23rd meeting. I believe I was there. Pretty sure.
You believe or you know? I know your baby's here.
Does anyone else remember me?
Okay, we're gonna fix it. Okay, with that direction, we need approval?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Item number three, under recognition and award, we have the City Art Award. Bonnie and Mary Ann, would you like to address the council and all the citizens of Austin?
Yeah, thank you. We come bearing gifts.
Well, you started this, right?
Does that happen very often, Mayor, that people bring a gift to you?
Yeah, but they're not always good gifts.
Well, thank you very much. This is the City Choice from the Austin Artworks Festival, and we want to thank the city of Austin. We couldn't do the festival without your support. It's just amazing, working with Kim at Park and Rec, Brian with the police department, Craig was there volunteering, Janet was there volunteering, others volunteering, others visiting the festival. I mean, we just, we couldn't do it, and so thank you very, very much. And we have a story to tell about the picture. Jeff and Paul were the two city council members who came and chose it. And what they do is they come and we explain, you know, where, what artists they can look at and stuff, and they were like, oh, how are we gonna do this? And it's so amazing, because each time people do it, it just works out beautifully. And the author, or the artist, excuse me, is Christopher Beeb, and he's from Zambroda. And the name of the painting is "Austin Power Plant, Early Morning." And what happened is Christopher had never been to Austin, and he was jury'd in, he was, you know, one of the artists who was chosen to come and show his work. So he, about two weeks before the festival, came to Austin, and he sat in different parts of the community and painted. And one of the things he painted was the utility building. But he said to us, he was telling us as we were going around, he said, the people in Austin were so friendly. They'd come up and ask me what I was doing, and welcoming to the community, and then just the friendly, welcoming atmosphere at the festival. So then Paul and Jeff walk around, Christopher did not know who they were, what was going on, and he told his story to them, and I got this call on my cellphone, "We've got the painting," you know, because not only the beautiful painting, but the wonderful story that went with it, so. And then Mary Ann's gonna talk a little bit about the festival, too, and I'll hold the...
Now Bonnie, you started this award, didn't you?
Pardon me?
You started this award?
Ah, yeah, a long, long time ago. I am really getting old.
We're starting to move the painting, or the, move them now to different offices.
Well, and that's what I hear. Yeah, Holly was saying she has one in her office, and that's wonderful. They used to all fit in council chambers, but that was a long time ago, so that's great.
We, we have one other little story about Christopher Beeb. When Jeff was visiting the festival with his daughter, his daughter wanted to buy a painting that day, and the artist heard her saying that, begging her dad to buy a painting. So that night, he went and painted a little painting and gave it to Jeff's daughter. So that's what kind of an amazing guy he was. We also wanted to just share just a couple things with the council about the festival this year and how well it went with, especially with their move to downtown. And like Bonnie mentioned, we could not do it without the help from the city departments between the park benches, the picnic tables, the stage, all that kind of stuff, helping us set up and getting the flags up around Austin as well. And we had over 220 volunteers this year, and we received many, many compliments from the artists and the festival goers that Austin really knows how to treat artists, so that was so positive. And also Sweet Reeds was just hopping with, with the authors and lots of people in Sweet Reeds, as well as the Spam Museum, the Austin Artwork Center, and then all the restaurants. And many of the visitors also asked us about recommendations for dinner reservations, so they also branched out across the city. And many stayed in our hotels and also the campgrounds around Austin. And we also had one artist, we had artists from all different states, but we also even had an artist this year from Germany, which was very interesting, and our first international artist, I believe. And then we had a fabulous turnout at the Paramount, over 500 people, for the outrageous concert, which was a big hit, and so that was really lovely. So we just wanted to tell you that the change of venue went well. We couldn't be more pleased with how it went downtown, and we're really looking forward to next year as well.
And, excuse me, but our, our director of the festival is sitting with a wee one, and, and we missed her. She was the director for 11 months, and then the month of August...
She left us.
She left us. I don't know why, but she's back, well, she will be back soon.
And she was at the festival.
Yeah, so thank you to you, Laura.
Thank you, Laura, for all your assistance prior.
So thank you, and we'll give it to Mayor Tom?
Yes.
All right. This is now to go home with you now. Thank you.
Thank you.
You'll get that hung up in the next couple days. Next, I have a proclamation. Proclamation. Our city's, our community's success depends on making sure that all residents feel welcome here. Today, new residents are a vital part of our community, bringing fresh perspectives and new ideas, starting businesses and contributing to the vibrant diversity that we all value. And whereas this week, we honor the spirit of unity that is bringing neighbors together in Austin, during Welcoming Week, I invite all residents of Austin to join this movement of communities nationwide by renewing our commitment to our core American values and by taking action in the spirit of welcoming. By working together, we can achieve greater prosperity and make our community a kind of place where diverse people from around the world feel valued and want to put down roots. And whereas, regardless of where we are born or what we look like, we are residents united in our efforts to build a stronger Austin. By recognizing the contributions we all make to creating a vibrant culture and a growing economy, we make our community more prosperous and more inclusive to all, we'll call it home. And whereas, let us come together to build communities where every resident has the opportunity to contribute his or her best. Let us come together to create more prosperous communities and to reaffirm that Austin stands as a beacon of freedom and opportunity. And whereas Austin will commemorate Welcoming Week 2017 with several local events, including a Riverland Community College Inclusion Event, summer elementary school flag walk, and family program, a 5K sponsored by Mauer Refresh, YMCA Free Family Swim and Gym Night, and a movie screening with panel discussion hosted by members of the Corinnae Community. The Human Rights Commission will also be sharing findings from our recently released Welcoming Report with community member, with community groups. Now therefore, I, Thomas A. Steen, Mayor of Austin, do hereby proclaim September 15th through September 24th of 2017 as Welcoming Week 2017. We don't have anybody from Human Rights here, do we?
No.
We have in the past. It's kind of a fortuitous time for this, I think, with what's going on nationally. Anyway, it's good that we reaffirm our faith in our new citizens. We are to the consent agenda. We need a motion.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. We are to, under public hearings, is five as a resolution reviewing a tax abatement application for Bigelow and Lennon Construction. Craig.
Thank you, members. Mayor, Bigelow Lennon Construction has submitted an application for tax abatement consistent with our Austin Homes Initiative for 2005 12th Avenue Northeast in the Nature Ridge subdivision. Estimated value of the home is $250,000. The application is in accordance with the city's adoption policy. Council action is requested to approve the abatement.
Public hearing, is there anybody here that wants to speak on this? Is there anybody on the council that wishes to chip in? If not, we need a resolution for approval or denial of abatement.
So moved.
For what?
Approval.
Approval? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item six is a motion approving working with WHKS for development of a sanitary sewer collection system project. Stephen, we kind of covered this at the work session, but...
Yes, as, just to expand on what you mentioned there, the sanitary sewer collection plan moving forward with WHKS would involve ordinance review, GIS development, inflow and infiltration management, such as inspection of sump pumps and a sump pump inspection program, along with smoke testing in different neighborhoods. Part four of the plan would include a replacement schedule for our existing infrastructure. Part five is reviewing our lift stations and what needs to be done with those, and then step six is developing a funding source to spread out and pay for some of these improvements that are necessary. So again, we would recommend moving forward with WHKS for this work.
Council, anything? Now we need a motion.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Thank you. Item number seven is a motion approving a settlement agreement. Mr. Dinkert.
City Attorney's Office and staff have been working with an insurance company in relation to a claim we had for a streetlight that was hit by a, by a driver. The original bill we sent was based on a brand-new streetlight, and the insurance company is only allow, is only going to pay for a depreciable value of the streetlight. After further review of Stephen Lang, we've decided that we'd like to recommend approval of acceptance of $3,000 of the outstanding bill versus the $3,795 we billed.
Council, if there's nothing from the council, we need a motion. So moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Eight is a resolution approving a hard liquor on-sale license for 1910 Fresh Mexican Kitchen Anne.
Yes, 1910 Fresh Mexican Kitchen has applied for hard sale, on like, hard sale liquor license. We would request the approval, and then I'll just speak to number nine at the same time. Steve's Pizza, the ownership is being transferred, so we would request that we transfer their wine on sale and Sunday Wine on Sale.
Council, if nothing further, we need a resolution for eight.
So moved the resolution.
Second. Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Nine is a resolution approving a transfer of wine on sale and Sunday Wine on Sale license for Steve's Pizza. Ms. Kiesel. I spoke to it.
Yeah, I would just request that they approve the transfer of Steve's Pizza.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second. Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Ten is a resolution setting hearings, setting public hearings for October 2nd, 2017 for assessments. Ann?
Yes, these are typical fall assessments that we do every year for snow, junk, grass mowing, forfeited properties. We have the new administrative citations that weren't paid, which would be assessed, and then we have some hazardous housing mitigation along with miscellaneous sidewalk and driveway projects. So we would request we set the public hearings for October 2nd, and then we will publish and mail notices to each owner.
Council, we need a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Fisher, second.
Second.
Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
And then that's during our regular council meeting, or just before?
That's correct.
Okay, just so people know if they want to attend. Item 11 is a motion authorizing the Fall Yard Waste Program. Mr. Lang.
Yeah, with the temperatures out there today, you can tell fall's quickly approaching, so setting our Fall Yard Waste Program is this item on the agenda. We're looking at accepting yard waste at the Cook Farm, as we have in the past, with dates for acceptance, September 16th through November 26th. We accept yard waste from dawn until dusk at the facility, at the site. We accept leaves, grass, and plants from gardens. We do not accept branches, and we request that residents remove their leaves from their plastic bags and either take their plastic bags back home with them to throw them away, or throw them away in our containers that we have on site. So, so those are some of the basic requests that we have. Again, we're accepting yard waste out at the Cook Farm, as we have in the past, and funds to pay for this come out of our transfer station budget.
Are there hours on that?
Dawn until dusk.
Okay, um, motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Twelve is a resolution approving an airport maintenance and operation agreement with MinDOT. Steve?
This is similar to what we have approved, or agreements we've had with MinDOT in the past, where they pay up to 75% of the funds at the, that are expended out at the Austin Municipal Airport with a, with a cap of $49,739. In the past, we have, we have maxed out those funds, and what we can use them on are winter snow maintenance, as we hire contractors to clear snow out at the airport, or if we have to put down chemicals at the airport, we're, we get reimbursed for that, as well as summer mowing, pavement maintenance, sweeping and patching, and then also building, utilities, supplies and repairs are what we use those funds for.
Council, we need a resolution. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Thirteen is a resolution approving a contract with SEH for a facility piping plan at the wastewater treatment plant. Mr. Lang.
As part of the facility plan that SEH is currently working on, they put together this drawing, that's the second page of your handout, which shows a, an overlay of all the different piping projects that have been done at the wastewater treatment plant. The work that they've concluded so far to date is really the extent of what was planned as part of the facility plan. But our crews down at the treatment plant that are currently using paper plans to try to find existing underground utilities have found that this overlay, which overlays all the different projects on one drawing, is very helpful. You can see the different colors there. Red is original pipe work that was done during original construction of the plant in the 1920s. There's a green color for 1930s work, a cyan or a light blue for 1960s, a darker blue for the 90s, and then a purple for the 2000s. This, the staff down there feels that this would be very helpful to them for locating and identifying underground utilities, and this cost with SEH for an additional $10,000 is to make this program more user-friendly, identifying and noting things like potable water and plant water that's used on site, gas mains, and also building outlines. So we would recommend approving this contract with SEH to complete this, this working AutoCAD document that we can use going on into the future.
Council, if there's nothing further, we need a resolution.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Fourteen is a resolution accepting donations to the city. We need a resolution. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Fifteen is a motion approving a Grow Austin Business Incentive Program. Craig?
Thank you, Mayor and members. Before you unite is a proposal. This falls in the category of all good things come to those who wait. We worked in earnest with Mauer County to come up with a final agreement. We brought this for, forward to you at the September 6th, 2016 work session. This was based on the council's goal of making Austin a leader in economic development growth while focusing on adding quality jobs and tax base enhancement. This program looks to incentivize business development. In the packet, we had it listed at 500,000 of, of development. We'd like to change that to 250,000, which is accurate on the exhibits, but that was in flux at the time of putting this together. That mirrors the state of Minnesota Job Creation Fund, capital investment rebate and job training program. We're trying to add this on to make Austin more competitive to our competing communities for businesses that might be looking to locate in Austin, as well as being cognizant of the fact that communities' growth largely is dependent upon local businesses adding jobs and, and growing. We have a focus on higher wages and good-paying jobs, so you'll find in the proposal, and this was something Mauer County officials were particularly interested in, but would require any jobs, new jobs that would be incentivized would have to be 140% of poverty or higher, as well as we always had the provision that the higher wages that were paid, the more incentive that would be rewarded to the company. That 140% of poverty is currently at 1655, and would apply to 75% of any new jobs created by the company, so they couldn't add several low-paying jobs, as well as bringing on a handful of higher-paying jobs. The exhibit outlines the structure of the program, but also, as I mentioned earlier, mirrors the state programs. It's notable that our incentives will give higher standing to the state programs by having an adopted local program that adds further incentives. This program also includes participation from Austin Utilities. It's built more around load demand, so basically more electricity and more utilities that the business uses in their expansion, while still being dependent upon the tax value and job creation numbers. It was how they had based their incentive. We still await Mauer County's final approval on moving down to the $250,000 of investment, but otherwise, they've agreed to that in concept, and will be moving it forward to their board. I'm happy to answer any questions about it, but if council so chooses, we suggest approving the proposal and Exhibit 1 and 2, and adopting this as a standing policy of the city. It should also be noted that funding would be dependent, or project awards would be dependent upon funding as well as considered on a case-by-case basis, so if there'd be a conflicting business with an existing one in Austin, it certainly would be within the purview of council to deny that application. As part of our marketing, Mr. Gary, myself, and others certainly recognize that there's other businesses in the community and would direct potential ones to that fact if we saw conflict arise, but please note that you would ultimately have final approval on every proposal that comes forward. John Gary is here this evening to add additional comments to the proposal.
Your Honor, council members, I don't have too much to add to it. Craig, he did a very thorough job of hitting the highlights. We have been at it for a while, but it is exciting to, to get to the point where we feel like we have a consensus and a partnership on this with county and Austin Utilities and DCA. I think it will help raise awareness of some state programs that local businesses could take, you know, take advantage of, so we'll keep that, I think, at the forefront, is to make sure that local businesses can participate. And it's a pilot, I think, we, we're not sure what kind of play this will get with the businesses, so we're gonna monitor it and maybe adjust some of the, some of the guidelines, as, you know, if, if we come back to you with some recommendations, it might be because it's really going well, or we're not getting enough traction on it, but it's, it's, I think overall, it's a way to try to stand out a little bit. We're not trying to provide pots of gold to businesses. This is a way to just, just be a little bit unique and stand out. That's all, and I can answer any questions.
Council, any questions for Craig or John?
How unique is this in the state or in Southern Minnesota, this kind of a program?
Yeah, the, the concept, I think, we first had was that we would look at some state programs and then add this little extra match, and when I talked to the state about that, they thought that it was completely unique, that they didn't know of any other community that, that framed it that way.
So it is completely unique, there's not, I mean, as far as, ain't no, nobody else is doing this?
Yeah, somebody could do it on an ad hoc basis, but I think also part of the idea is that we can show this to someone right away and say, we will offer this, you know, we'll look at it on a case-by-case basis, but to come at it more in a proactive manner, the state thought it was a unique approach.
A little bit of separation from everybody else, that's good.
Great.
Council, any more questions?
I have a question. I'm very supportive of this proposal, and I compliment you on work well done and persistence in getting all the parties to agree, and I also think it was really smart to align with the state incentives the way you did. Just one clarifying question. Am I reading it right that retail or restaurants, hospitality, leisure are not eligible for this program?
Uh, Councilmember Helly, yes, they would not be eligible. Again, we're mirroring the state's criteria, as far as that's concerned, but as you can imagine, when you're delving into the retail trade, incentivizing one business and then not offending another business in the community that would have a similar business, would put us in kind of an awkward situation, so it's really intended to do that. One example, I think, that we talked about was a, if there was a insurance company call center, that's something we could look at incentivizing, but if it was a local insurance agent, no, that in that instance, you wouldn't be looking to incentivize that as a rule.
And we're mirroring the state on that?
We are.
And I fully understand, let me be a little bit of a voice of the voters and say that when I'm out talking to people and they want new businesses in Austin, what they talk about is retail and restaurants. So I think this is great, we should definitely do it. I just want you to be aware that the voters have hunger for supporting retail and restaurants, and a tool like this might not be appropriate, but I'd love to see something that is appropriate for that sector.
When we use this tool to attract businesses, the restaurants and retail will follow, because that's, you're creating jobs and you're bringing people to town, and they'll, the other will follow. You gotta get these guys first. And we're actively pursuing the restaurants and, I mean, I know, I see what's going on, and I know that we're actively pursuing those also. They're not a part of this particular program, but just because they're not doesn't mean that we're not pursuing them.
And I would think it'd be very hard to incentivize retail and restaurant business without, like you say, offending current businesses that are already existing, and they're kind of a risky thing, anyway.
Start a war. Okay, any more questions? If not, we need, where are we at here?
I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?[1690.01] Is there a second?
Second.
This is a motion.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, number 16 is a resolution declaring 400 34th Street Southwest a hazardous structure...
31st.
31st, what did I say?
I think 34.
Okay. 31st Street Southwest, a hazardous structure. Any questions on that?
Well, I'd like to say that I've, over the years, that's probably the most complaints I've had is over the Johnson Floral property, and I'm glad we're finally doing something about it.
Why don't you make a resolution? You did?
I make, make a resolution to declare 400 31st Street Southwest a hazardous structure.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
And Holly, tell me, what are our steps now with that? What's the next step, or what are we going to do? I mean, does that mean that Johnson Floral is going to be knocked down eventually, or...
Because then you really have an opportunity to repair the...
We want to hear from you.
Yeah, we need, we, they have the opportunity to make the repairs that have been requested in the resolution. If they do not do so within a specified period of time, it would go forward to our city attorneys, and we would bring the matter to court, ultimately to get a judgment from the court in order to proceed with demolition, if, if necessary, or if the city determined it wanted to make repairs, we could use that option as well.
A lot of it would be what is most fiscally responsible for us, but, so we can do either destroy it or repair it, if it gets that far.
Yeah, that's what we usually request from the court.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Seventeen is two motions granting the Planning and Zoning Department the power to contract for the removal of junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at A 1,005 3rd Avenue Northeast, the Trevino property. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And finally, B 2119 5th Avenue Northeast, our, RMAC property. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any citizens here who want to address the council? Otherwise, we're two reports of recommendations. Three, we'll start with you.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Steve?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Jeff?
Uh, nothing, Your Honor.
Gannon?
I just want to echo, you know, the presentation that, for Austin, the Austin Artworks Festival, that was very successful and, and seemed very busy with the transition to a new location. Again, thank you to all the people that helped make that happen and to the many visitors that had the opportunity to enjoy it.
Okay, Laura?
Nothing.
Dave?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Paul?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Craig?
Uh, yes, we got word late last week that the House Capital Investment Committee, which oversees bonding requests at the state level, will be visiting with us tomorrow at 1:00 PM, so we look forward to their visit and highlighting the 4th Avenue project, as well as the Ramsey-Milpon project, so we're excited about that. And otherwise, Kim, I believe, has something for us.
Thank you. I'd like the citizens to know that the splash pad at the pool has been closed today. A little bit of weather, maybe, so thank you for all your patronage, and we'll see you again next year. And also, deer hunt applications, that deadline is September 14th.
14th?
Yep.
And they come right here for them?
Yep, they come to the park and rec office to pick one of those up and turn that in.
Do we have any yet?
Yes. I didn't count today, but I know we had 30.
And we're going to approve how many? Do we, 40?
We have 30 in. But I don't, we have 60 tags, but I'm, we're having an informational meeting on Tuesday, September 26th, at 6:30. Pardon me?
We're not sure yet how many are going to be approved.
No.
But it's going to be substantial. Okay.
So they have to take an efficiency test, too?
Yes. So we'll have all that information, and anybody can come to that, especially those that have applied. Obviously, we'll want them to attend that meeting, but anyone else is welcome as well.
Kim, do you have information on the Harvest Festival that's at the pool?
I know that it's, I know we're having a booth there.
It's Saturday, September 16th.
Yes.
With more coney.
Nine o'clock.
More refreshed.
Yep. There's also 5K that day, and, you know, so there's lots of things going on. There'll be a lot of people with booths there. I want to say the library's there as well.
At the fairgrounds?
No, municipal pool parking lot.
Okay. Anybody else, Craig?
No, thank you.
Okay, the only, I'd like to mirror what they said, other people said about the art fest. And we do, we bring a lot of people to town that haven't seen Austin or haven't been here in a while, and we get a lot, I mean, I hear a lot of comments, people saying what a nice town we have and how friendly everybody is, and it's just fun. So with that, we need a motion to adjourn until Monday, September 18th, 2017, at 5:30. Any council? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Take a short break and meet in the small...